Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, September 24th, at 6:30 PM. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing afterward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Let's pray. Well, God, our Father, we gather here this evening again for the task of seeing the vision that you have for this community. Father, our prayer is for the men and women that lead this community, for wisdom and knowledge to be in their hearts and in their minds. Father, we pray for this community. Give us a vision of those things which will benefit us the most. Father, we thank you for those who protect us. Father, your protection upon them through all this, we give you praise and honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You get exercise when you come here, so. Mr. January, would you please call the role of the council?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards. Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzle.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Present.
President Bella.
Here.
Sixth president, one absent.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, would you please lead us on to the employee of the month for September?
Mr. President, thank you. I'll be pleased to do that. Mr. Lee, would you join me? Thank you. You know by, you no doubt by now have discerned how much I like doing this. I really think it's a very wonderful and modest thing that the council has instituted well before I was here. I have been here a year, by the way, I just wanted you to know that. No, no, you don't have to do that. But thank you, I appreciate it. I could have done this. I really do think it's an important, albeit modest, way to recognize the many ways in which we serve you. Councilmates policy, and they directly want to serve you. I know this because I've gotten to know them all, and while I can't read their hearts, you can see their hearts are avenge in terms of the work that they're doing for you. But we all know the real way we serve you is in the men and women who are in the departments doing the work, whether paving the streets or planning for us a better way to organize the uses in our community or to manage our watershed. And we have a great director of stormwater management in that department, and stormwater management and watershed management is really as old as scripture. I just said that to show off for the pastors here. First King, Chapter 18, around verses 32 through 35, there's a story of Elijah who's building an altar. But in building the altar and taking four large turns of water to pour around it, he makes sure that he cuts a trench suitable to manage the drainage. And you didn't think you had a historically important job. It's a very important job, but it's got scripture too. And so today, we're recognizing a member of the stormwater management department. Will Mike May please join us? I'm going to ask the stormwater management director, Matt Lake, to read the certificate of recognition for his employee.
Mike consistently demonstrates a high level of commitment and unwavering work ethic to ensure that the department remains effective and provides the highest level of service for the town of Maryville. He methodically completes all his tasks assigned and is always willing to go above and beyond by working weekends to ensure all inquiries and projects are completed expeditiously. He operates all equipment, including the vacator truck, the camera truck, the backhoe, the marshmaster. Also, his mechanical skills allows him to perform maintenance on all the equipment. As a multitasker, team player, and experienced operator, he has proven himself to be a valued member of the stormwater utility operations. So with that, I want to congratulate Mike, but I got to tell you, I host periodically meetings at the Stormwater Resource Center, and we have a number of communities that attend. And I give them a quick little tour along with our normal agenda we go through, and they look in the garage and they see all this equipment, the Jeff Vac truck, the backhoe, the camera truck, the marshmaster, the dump trucks, zero-turn mowers, and they're like, "How many guys you got?" I said, "I got one." He operates all these, all this equipment. And so, he's like the Swiss Army knife of employees because of his versatility with operating all this equipment. And he represents 25% of our workforce. So, we are just grateful to have him aboard our team, and he's done a tremendous job, and we hope to keep him around for a very long time. Thank you.
Did you get your picture, Mr.? You betcha. Let me get on the other side. Thank you very much.
So Matt, was that stormwater turned into wine?
Very good.
If I had that power, I would probably use it right now.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel. Thank you.
Under Communications, I did receive a letter from the Lake County Council with their recommendation and their nomination for Daniel C. Stevenson, Sr., to be appointed by the town of Maryville to the Economic Development Commission. Mr. Stevenson, Sr., has been nominated to serve for the remainder of the four-year term, which will expire on January 31, 2025. I'm going to accept the recommendation of the Lake County Council at this time and actually appoint Mr. Stevenson and welcome him to the Maryville Redevelopment Commission. Thank you, Dan. And Dan does come to us with quite a resume, including serving as a House State Representative for a variety of years, serving our region. So thank you, and welcome aboard. We're very excited to have you onboard.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. And Angie, where's Angie?
Angie left?
Okay. We will have an initial meeting and get together. Thank you. Moving on tonight to public hearings, special orders, we have a pre-adoption hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget for the town of Maryville. Mr. Griffin, can you walk us through this process? And tell me also, is it true we're going to double everyone's property taxes?
No, Mr. President, that is not our intention.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'll let Michael explain.
Mr. President, it would be in order at this time before I proceed to make sure that our publication was correct for today's public hearing.
Mr. Svetnov.
Your publications are in order, and at this time, it's necessary to proceed. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. January, members of the public that we all serve, this is a public hearing to hear feedback with regard to a proposed budget. I can tell you that this is a proposed budget that is in two forms. So let me begin by the form that we would usually do, and then talk about the one that we published. Ordinarily, based on property tax controls, the maximum amount of money that we could raise next year, which is what we'll try to do first, is $323,433.47. That's 4% of your maximum levy now. That basically is divided between two controlled funds, the general fund, which has got the 11 departments that you hear about, public safety being primary of the duties there, public administration as well, and the police pension fund from the 1925 Act. You can tell by the year of that act, it's when we thought pensions were an operating expense and not something that you save for. Thankfully, the legislature fixed that in 1977, but there's still people that were employed by our town who are now retired, for whom we have to continue to put that pension levy in place until they're no longer needed. That's the best way to describe that. However, for me, somebody who initially was trained and teaches others about public finance and budget, I see the budget document, Mr. President, members of the council, and Mr. Clerk Treasurer, as a policy document. It's not simply an economic document. It is units of resources to support services. I had a pastor in my earlier life once say, "If you showed him your checking book, he could tell you what you care about." If you look at the budget of the town of Maryville, you can see what we care about. And what we care about is public safety and roads. And so, this budget has to be advertised and adopted in a level that is much higher than you're accustomed to seeing. Some of you have done calculations and have seen that in many cases, it's a significant increase. I can tell you now, the Department of Local Government Finance will not grant that all, but we need to make the ask for the following reasons. I've known every clerk treasurer that has served in Maryville since its inception, except the first one, Ms. Cook, Merle Cook. And some of them were friends of mine, one of whom I actually stood up at his wedding. So I feel like I've been educated about Maryville a very long time before I had the high honor and sincere privilege of being able to come here and serve in this way. And one of the things that I've noticed is because of choices that nobody on that council has made, not one of them, even Councilor Pettit, who's got probably the greatest tenure of serving here, but choices made by councils that went well before that, we have managed to grow in a way that our resources do not match our needs. And I know this because I come from a community that is many times smaller. So let me remind you, you live in a community that has 33 square miles, that has, according to the 2003 inventory, 180, almost 181 road miles. Mr. King thinks there's more, and he's going to set that record straight, I'm sure. You're the third largest municipality in Lake County, the third out of 19, and the 25th largest out of 567 statewide. And yet, if you took that first 150 municipalities that's on the list, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, public, they would have something that Maryville does not have. Utilities that allow them to get diverse revenue streams from them because of their proprietary value. The only utility managed by the town of Maryville is stormwater, and it's the one that the law does not allow us to use to get a return on investment. I served in a community that's seven square miles, that has 10,000 less population than you have, and vastly less road numbers, about 88. And I had more property tax and financial resources than this community has. Now, my town was older, but that doesn't explain it all. We need to find a way to get to the resources for mostly public safety. So as proposed, this appeal is an attempt to do a couple of things, and I'm going to share them with you. One, to get about 21 more police officers and move four of them out of the allocation area funding, which state law allows us to do, but doesn't let us do prudently because those funds won't last as long as the town will, or as long as we hope the career will be for police officers that we hire. My goal, and I think the chief's goal, I know it's the council's goal, that every time we hire a police officer, they have a long career with us. And by that, I mean a long career. But they go home from every shift, they feel some personal gratification from having served, and they retire from here happy and well, and maybe to do something else, but that they retire from here and don't have their career cut short for other reasons because they do very dangerous work. This budget also, even with the advent of the fire territory, is designed to add 21 to 24 firefighters that we cannot afford now. Even with the territory for the town that's this big, and the fire territory is actually a little bit bigger because it takes in a little bit more of Ross Township than the footprint of Maryville does, it only has 15 full-time firefighters. That'll staff one truck. I'm told by people smarter than me that we need more than that to be staffed regularly in the event that we have significant call volume here. Now, you do in police. I was marveling at the call volume that Maryville enjoys or experiences, doesn't enjoy it all, and the amount of time that a police officer, sometimes two during a shift, have to spend out of call range, meaning they're on a task, and their reporting requirements or the resolving of the episode that they're dealing with takes a little longer than 20 minutes or more. And sometimes, two officers. Pulling them off the road means we're having less traffic enforcement and less regular patrolling, and it also means that we're not able to do the other things that we've come to expect our police department to do. Many of you may not know, some of you do, we've already said that in terms of animal control, we're only going to come out if there is a dangerous dog, as to find under the ordinance and statute. We cannot get strays any longer. Firstly, we have no resources to house them. Even with trying to negotiate something with Lake County, there isn't room for us. We're in a list, a waiting list. And so, we have to do the humane thing, which is to do none of those calls. Now, that is not something we desire to do, but it was of a number of bad choices, the least bad one we had to make so that everything else police we expect to be there for was able to do. This also will add the ability to do 20 more miles of roads than we're doing now. You'll recall, although again, Mr. King will tell you that we have more road miles than I'm saying, he thinks it's upwards of 238. But at 180 road miles, we're adding $5 million to the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, a fund that's, one of its purposes is to do that kind of work for road care. And the idea is, is that that $5 million, at the estimated price of $250,000 per road mile, that's a big number, means that we could do about 20 miles of roads with that, with $5 million. That's not all our roads, that's some of them. And that's only if we're doing resurfacing and milling and resurfacing, not reconstruction. So that's what's in here. And because we have a redevelopment and economic development department, this budget creates a general fund, which the statute has long called for us to have, and it's creating it in a way to respond to some advice that we got from the last formal audit we had from the State Board of Accounts, to respond to their concerns that we need to have a place that we can go to to just do operating expenses related to that function. When the redevelopment law was first written, allocation area money could be used for virtually anything related to redevelopment, including operations. But about 15 to 19 years ago, the law changed, and no operating uses can be used for that. So, the general fund of this town has a department, the Economic and Redevelopment Department, for which the operating expenses are posted, but not as much as we would ordinarily need. And we've doubled that because we think that this is, because we want to make sure that we followed the process the state had, we put it in as a separate fund, we also reserved the department in the general fund. They won't give us both, one will be removed, but we were being utterly cautious in putting two in, which accounts for some of the size. Now, we don't expect to recover in one year the choices that were made over 54 years, many of which were made in the first 20 years of incorporation to serve you. And I'm not blaming those predecessor servants. It is really hard unless you're a public finance nerd like me that went to school for it and whose wife loves him and is beautiful, which is proof there's a God and I'm still a nerd about public finance, to know how to plan that far ahead. It just is essentially what a council is, are people who've stepped up to say to their friends and neighbors, "I'm willing to serve you, if you'll let me," as your friend and neighbor, serving you as a neighbor on your council. They bring their experiences, sometimes more informed than others, the talents from their regular jobs, and a heart for service in every case. It's unusual to have people that have this kind of weird skill set I have, but I actually went to school for it, and I love it. We have to take this step as a necessary step to eventually solve the problem. So, again, it's likely that even in an emergency appeal like this, we're going to make a case to them to begin the process of correcting this. And our expectation is, if we're given the tools that we're asking for, which you see as taxes or we see as certainly that, we don't do it lightly, but they're the way that we pay resources or gain resources to largely do public safety and roads. Now, we have income tax. We'll soon have more of a steady use of the food and beverage tax. But food and beverage is not the problem here, and when that gets up to speed, that will allow us to develop our culture and recreation, our parks and recreation, delivering it better without reliance on property tax. In the case of the income tax, the economic development tax has been used to try to also support the police and public safety function in the general fund by being transferred there, and the public safety amount is used to augment salaries for senior leadership in that department. So we're already using it the way the law allows us to. Having said all that, it's unlikely we're going to get this, but we have to take this first start, and we need to tell you why we're doing it. Because again, I teach and believe that this is a policy document, which describes the units of service that we hope to be able to have, to deliver in ways that we can't now, the public safety function, which we feel that we can enhance with this. Now, we're not trying to do less, we're doing all we can with what we have now. And again, if we're not able to succeed in making this argument under this law, there'll be another path that we're going to take, but we're not going to be able to raise anything more than the $323,000 that I told you earlier, $324,000. Spread among a tax base that's grown vastly, vastly. I went and looked at the history, and I'll share it with somebody here, but in the early 2000s, you started breaking the 900 million tax base rate and got into the billions. You're at roughly 1.9 billion right now. So something's being done right here, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Clerk Treasurer. And I can say that, not being self-serving because I've only been here a year, I had no hand in it, but I can recognize the policy choices they've made. We're going to try to find our way to get those resources to deliver. As in all cases, our ethos should be, and I hope is, that we want to give you the highest possible quality services that you need at the lowest possible cost. That's what I hope I'm helping, I know that they may not have called it that, but that is what they want, the council wants. It is what I hope to help them get to, along with the Clerk Treasurer. So, I will take questions under the public hearing if you have any, Mr. President.
Michael, would you explain the levy, please?
Yes.
That's.
So, as proposed in our advertisement, we said that the sum of all of the funds we budget at the fund level. I always get asked, "Are you doing the budget?" Our answer ought to be, "I'm doing the budgets," because we have to do it for every fund that we have, which is a public finance nuance. Think of funds as a bucket, or better still, like a personal checking account, only we don't use it like that. And we have one for every special mission. State law says the general fund can be used for everything that there's no other fund for, which was the first corporate fund here, and every other fund that we have is usually limited to its purposes, parks and recreation, some of the debt service, allocation area money, and likely. So having said that, the proposed increase, the proposed spending for 2025 is $69,793,15. That's the sum of every fund. The general fund component of that is $21 million. Right now, we're at $12 million. The proposed estimate of levy to support that is $37,797.65. And again, this appeal that we're using forces us to adopt at this level, but we also have to have a shadow budget, which is the budget we think we can get. And even if we get anything close to this, and I assure you, it's very unlikely, because the circumstances, this is the only one that we can make this appeal, we had to start the dialogue with DLG up. It only lasts a year, so it only gives us breathing room to take the steps necessary to find our way through this. We also thought about, if this path, which we think we have to take first before we take the other ones, allowed us, we would have done something incremental. We had this conversation recently in the Budget Committee. We would not have gone to the highest we could go to at first, we would have developed that into a step process. But this process doesn't allow us that. We get kind of, we lose options if we don't do what we're doing. Lastly, the total amount of property tax levies imposed now is $20,82,209. And that's the difference between 37, so it's about 17 million difference. And the current total tax, the current, let's see, what is that? I want to make sure I'm giving you the right number. I take that back.
Current tax.
That is, the $20 million is the excessive levy appeal, I beg your pardon, and the current levies are $13,848,361. So said again, $20,82,209 is the amount of the $37 million that is the extra we're asking for, but we only have $13.8 million currently. And again, it is a process. We have to show you our aspirations, and there still has to be work between now and October 8th, the next meeting, where we're going to formally take steps to adopt. If we're ready, we have to reconcile at least the budget we think we're going to get, and after we take this step, we'll then take the steps that we think can make us do it more gradually. But from the best advice we have here and our training, this is the step that we felt we had to do. And again, that $20 million extra is overstated by the amount that is in the double statement, basically, of the redevelopment fund, which you know we're only going to get one. Mr. President, unless you have questions on me specifically, I'll be happy to take questions in the public hearing.
Any specific questions for Mr. Griffin from the council?
Nope.
We'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the 2025 budget as proposed? State your name and address for the record, please, and come to the podium. We could form a queue there if you'd like. Yes, sir.
Brian Messarch, 201 East 68th Place. I'd like to address the fact that, Mr. Griffin, you remind me of a professor that I used to fall asleep in class. It's all talk, and quite frankly, I'm tired of it. Your public notices are, by the way, not compliant with federal law of the Americans Disabilities Act. I'm a disabled person with visual imperatives, and you actually handed me a public notice in six-point font. It was offensive, and since you want to be concerned with the letter of the law, I think that you need to go and take a look at the letter of the law, because the ADA is pretty clear, and the town of Maryville does not respect the ADA. If we actually wanted to spend money on public service with redevelopment that has $9 million, $12 million, we would have more firefighters now, we'd have more police now, we wouldn't even be talking about how we can't go to emergency calls and also take care of traffic. So instead of talking about the big dreams that, "Oh, we're going to spend our money on this if we can get the money," why are we not doing this right now? Us as residents should be asking, "Why are you not doing this right now?" Because I can tell you something that councils in the past 50 years, this council right here voted to give Andran High School $1 million, and has also voted to give the Boys and Girls Club $2 million, two organizations that don't need our $3 million. But you want to know what? Our police department could use $3 million, our fire department could use $3 million. Here is, here is a town, our fire department wants to have the corner of 73rd Madison to put up a memorial, they can't even bring themselves to give that to them. Why are we not giving to these people who give and put their lives in the line for us? We should, anything they ask for, we should be giving it to them. Why are we not doing that right now?
Mr. Messarch, may I respond? You're not finished? I'm sorry, please conclude.
My point is, the proof is in the pudding. We should be asking why this isn't being done. We're talking about we're going to add services. No, our branch pickup, which is only supposed to be for storms, as we learned last week, we don't do that. We used to have a town dumpster where town residents could go put things in a dumpster if we had larger things. We don't have that. Our parks department, go down to the community center and ask how many programs we have for kids, we don't, because Mr. Griffin is hoping and praying that open court is going to work and that we don't have anybody to pay attention to these kids. My point is this, we need to look at ourselves and brutally assess, are we doing what we need to be doing right now? And we're not. We could be doing better, but now we're asking for more. And so, when, I own my home, so I have to go pay my tax bill, and when it goes up several hundred dollars every year, that kills me because it's like, "Oh, I get to go down to Lake County and write them another $1,000." That's my point, that I want everybody to understand, we should be doing more with what we have now.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Messarch, thank you.
Why aren't we doing that now?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Messarch, and public. First, it is true that the law got changed last year to allow allocation area increment to be used for any public safety purpose. The problem with that is, is that they don't last. I want our police officers to have a career with us of 32 or more years. Every one of those allocation areas has a year of less than 25 because there is debt issued against it. They will expire eventually. It's not a sustainable source of resource to support public safety. Even moving officers in there Even moving officers in there because of the need being extreme was always done with the understanding by the policymakers that we needed to find a way to move them back out as quick as possible, because they can't last there. So let's say that we're in the 15th year, in some cases, we're awfully close to, a few of them being up in a few years. What do I do when that runs out to those four officers? Or those 10 firefighters? We made a choice because it wasn't good public finance policy, although it's an easy thing to suggest that we could do it now. That is partially true, but it's not prudent and wise to do it. Secondly, I do thank you for telling me about the ADA material. I know that this particular part of the law doesn't require it, but in most cases, I have to be made aware of the accommodation needed, but I will take into account that, and we're going to try to even work to get our website more compliant with that as well. And I thank you for reminding us of that and informing us of that. Lastly, the one thing that residents of Indiana did many years ago was modify and amend our constitution, taking what was a state law and now making it basically the organic law of our state by giving you circuit breaker protection on your home, your residents that you own. So, for the last three years, by act of the legislature, you are not going to pay more than 97%, 98%, or 99% of the value of your house as assessed by an assessor. Now, if the value of your house went up because of market conditions, that's outside of our hands, and we're kind of torn. We want to make the community so successful that the value of everyone's house is going up, but I get it. I had farmers in my family, too. They only wanted the value of their farmland to be really high when they were ready to sell and retire. They wanted it really low in the tax making. So I'm sympathetic. But the fact is, you are protected from most of this by virtue of now not being liable for more than 1% of the value on your home. It comes back to you as what's called a circuit breaker credit, but in fact, it's a cut in our revenue. Now, the other thing that is interesting about Maryville is your allocation of tax base. In many communities, including the community I formerly served for many years, the residence part of the tax base to all other parts of the tax base, that is to say, home ownership part of the tax base, was between 60% and 70%. Here, it's 50%, and the rest is everything else. Now, that means that they've been getting a whopping lot of businesses to help offset the burden on everyone here. It's why our tax rate in aggregate is well under $3, and the corporate rate itself, right now, is only about 44 cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Now, mind you, I get that when your tax bill comes, it's faint consolation. I pay taxes, too. But we're trying not to impact that unduly. But we are trying to find resources so we can deliver the kind of service that a community of this size and the people who live in it expect us to at the highest possible quality at the lowest possible cost. And again, this is a proposal only, and I assure you that at the time that it is reviewed, there's a public meeting that the DLGF actually has with us, the Department of Labor and Finance, I mean. They're going to ask many of the questions you're asking, and we have to get over a lot of hurdles with them. But we need to take this step to show that we tried this, and we'll see what happens. Our expectation is, is that what we've expected here is unlikely to be granted, but we needed to put the numbers together to demonstrate. And again, when I'm talking about 22 to 24 firefighters or 21 police officers, why that's more than just those, we did an intermediate range of salary for that, but it does add to the cost of pension support for those salaries and the taxes that we as employers have to pay for them as an employer, Social Security and Medicare, and the pension itself, and, and health insurance as a group benefit. Anyway, I hope I was responsive, Mr. President.
Sir, go ahead. Thank you.
Ron Barandella, 7005 Delaware Street. I've lived here since before it was Maryville. I've been here since 68. And this whole thing of the, we need an extra $20 million. When you have people on this council who say they would give that $2 million and $1 million seven days a week is the reason that we need that. Because it's, it's, you don't mind raising the taxes for the little guy when you have people on the board that are frivolous with it and could care less. They don't ask us for this. Now, we just found out about this from Facebook in the last day or two. So, I mean, if you guys don't want to make it like you're sneaking something under the table or some shady stuff, you know, you can, you can look down like that, that's fine. You can talk all the garbage that you want. I really don't care. As far as the stormwater thing, well, there happens to be a stormwater thing that's in my neighborhood for what, since May, is still sitting there. And I don't know what takes that long. I'm happy, happen to be in the business of the direction of pouring stuff. And I've never seen a job go on this long with this much garbage. First, it was, oh, we missed the shot, we were off by an angle, oh, we didn't calculate it right, it's not in the right place. Is that where a lot of this money goes to?
Go ahead, man.
Actually, none of your tax money goes to the stormwater fee. So what I wanted to say about that, and I'll get to that in my report, and Tim Hollensworth from VS Engineering is actually right next to you. With respects to that project, there were two change orders and that had stalled out the project. Now, you want to make sure that everything is accurate before you commence, so there had to be some recalculations done, coordination with Grimmer Construction, and they will be remobilizing next week. So once they're on the project, they're going to go full throttle and get that project done. I want it done quick. It's been very frustrating for me.
Yeah, it's been frustrating, because
We haven't experienced that as well.
My neighbors had their fence and driveway ripped apart since then.
Yeah. We talked, I think we had talked to your neighbor with regards to the dog. They'll be putting up a fence next week, is that correct?
Correct.
So we have reached out to anybody, and anybody that has a concern can contact us directly, not on Facebook. So that's the quickest way for us to respond, so that we can talk directly to you. But I feel your frustration, because we've never had delay like this, ever. And, but you got to get it right before you commence. You can't
So who's paying for this project, then?
We're paying for the project, so that cost will come from our utility, but it doesn't come out of the general fund.
But it comes out of our
And, and Little Cal actually committed over $230,000 worth of cost share towards this project. So one of the things we do is we apply for a lot of grants and cost share to offset, because again, we're a small utility, and we've been trying to do larger projects all over town. You know, some of these projects are in the millions of dollars, and so it's not cheap, because forever, you haven't had a stormwater utility until very recently. So we're catching up to old problems. So that problem that exists where you have, you know, at 69th Connecticut, where it's like a bolt, where it floods out there, that whole area has been like that since town became a town. So, so we're trying to retroactively fix these things. Now, meanwhile, costs are going up, as you can imagine, you see everywhere, you know, in your daily lives, how costs go up. So we're dealing with the same thing, too. So I don't want to see any delays. I want to get everything done as quickly as possible. I know once Grimmer's back on site, they're going to go full throttle, get that thing done. And so if you have any questions, contact us directly. That's all I ask.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Any other public comments? Mr. January, is this your public comment? Go ahead.
Sure. So, hello, Eric January. One of my concerns as not only the treasurer, but also a taxpayer, a person that owns commercial and residential property in the town, was some of the things that we addressed yesterday in a meeting is, I felt like, from a standpoint of, I didn't want people to experience payment shock, going from a $1,000 bill to $1,077, because I just think it would make the town more unaffordable. And then in, in addition to it, I believe that it's hypocritical to ask for a tax increase when we're being generous with other people's money. We, we have the Boys and Girls Club, not to pick on them, in Andrian. They are large organizations, but yet we're giving away a million dollars, money that can be used in the short term to fund police officers, firefighters, and things like that, until we can do something else better at a later date. So we can't overlook the things that we can do right now versus imposing a huge tax increase, which this is proposed. And everything that I've shared with everyone indicated that this is a proposal, and that's why I asked that everybody would come out and share your opinion, whether it's for it or against it, because I believe the council people need that until they can make a informed decision. Because I'm concerned also about the affordability of their town. Our taxes are where they are, and we, we like to say that we're the third lowest in Lake County. I would love to keep it at the third lowest in Lake County. We've got a lot of corporate interest in the town that are certainly paying a lot of taxes, but one of the things that's attracting them here versus going to Chicago is the fact that our taxes are much lower than what you pay in Cook County in Illinois. But if we have a potential tax increase of 77%, in some cases, 306%, in another case, 400, 400%, our area may not be as attractive to other people despite the fact that we've got great locations right off of I-65 and Lincoln Highway. So me personally, I encourage the council people to, and I talk to them, we have meetings, we're behind closed doors, and we try to address some of these issues. But taxation is not going to be a solution to just giving money away. We got to solve the problem before we actually increase our taxes.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Katrina Barandella, 7005 Delaware Street, just want to add on to what my husband has already said. The challenge I'm having, the biggest challenge probably with the taxes going up, is the fact that I see all of this new construction going up. Yes, we're getting all this money from all these other businesses, but yet if you look on the exact opposite side of the street, you have strip malls that have been vacant for years. For years, they've been vacant. So what kind of different changes can you guys make to utilize buildings that are already there? Either bring them up to date, fix water leaks, fix some carpeting, do the front of them, instead of putting all these big buildings that, you know, we're going to end up having to sacrifice for it to have those things come into our town. And as far as like, us not having the money to staff our police departments and our fire departments, that is like spitting in our faces. Who is going to take care of your home when your home catches on fire? Is it going to be the director of Andrian? Is it going to be the Boys and Girls Club director, come and fix your home? No, it's going to be police officers geared up to protect themselves, to protect you. And the law enforcement, our town has never had enough police officers, never. I come from a military family, I will always support the blue line, I will always drop doughnuts off when I have extra money to these departments to let them know somebody cares about them. Okay? Rocking back in your chair while you brag online about the money, the millions, the millions that you're giving to people who are not going to be there in an emergency situation is disrespectful. And I'm sure if your parents were any kind of what I call old-school thinking people who had values and morals, would be so disappointed in the way that you're behaving with our money, how you can just give it away. So I mean, the excuses that we have to get $20 million before we can help a police officer have a decent retirement, that's, it's not acceptable. It'll never be acceptable. And I know the people that I live in the neighborhood with, and I shop with, and I spend time with, are never going to think that you take good enough care of your police departments and your fire departments. So you need to reevaluate your numbers, find out which corporation you want to give a million dollars to, and then ask a police officer if he's got a retirement plan set up. Ask him what, what colleges his kids are going to be able to go to. Police officers have always been underpaid, always. And now you're saying we can't get 22 police officers? I'm telling you, almost two years ago, in another city, which claims to have all the fanciest, best departments everywhere, okay? When I had an emergency situation with my daughter passing away, I had 15 police officers in her home and in her front yard. So what would happen in Maryville if one home needed 15 police officers? The rest of the, the rest of the town gets nothing? I mean, do, do you have any feedback on that?
Well, there'd be mutual aid, there'd be 15 officers there if 15 were needed, ma'am. Absolutely.
From where? Hobart?
From neighboring towns and cities or our own department, ma'am, absolutely.
It's unacceptable when you say you're giving a million dollars to this and $2 million to that.
No, that money doesn't come from tax
Wait, organizations have existed for years on public funding and tuition into that school. I've never paid money for a Catholic school, never. Okay? So to say that we have to pay for that school to be there instead of moving
You're not, you're not paying, ma'am, is the point. It's coming from the Tiff district, it's not, it's not
It shouldn't be coming from our pockets.
It's not going, folks, please remember, folks, please remember, that million dollars is not going to operate Andrian High School. It's going to extend Georgia Street, which the RDC has done a lot of road projects in this town since I've been on the council and the RDC. That is for Georgia Street, has nothing to do with tuition reimbursement or paying teachers or anything like that. That's already being taken care of by big shoulders who gave $150 million to the parochial schools, which Andrian's going to get 30 million. We're only putting in the road, which was an agreement, so they would stay in Maryville and secure that north end. Everybody wants to chastise, hang on, you had your, your time, ma'am. Everybody wants to chastise this council, me in particular, about Andrian. Does anybody have a plan for the 48 acres out there in a vacant two-story building that was built in 1959? Everybody wants to kill us, right, Eric? You want to, you want to chastise the million dollars we're given? How about we talk to Leona about her Stephick Park that got vandalized because we don't have a Boys and Girls Club in the town of Maryville? Maybe the kids need to go to a Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, wait, we don't have police to protect our park.
Yeah.
He's out of order.
Yeah.
Mr. Messarch, you're out of order, sir. One more time.
To, to address what you just said, Mr. Pettit, just in terms of the road, the road was built, and we're saying it's down Georgia Street, but it was primarily built for Andrian. It, it wasn't built for anything else to expand Georgia, because there's one apartment complex over there, and I'm sure they're fine getting back, back and forth where they want to go. In terms of 48 acres, I'm sure if we're inventive, we can come up with something and then prize this 48 acres off of I-65. So something could be done with it, even with demolish it and make it a big, beautiful park. We could do something with it, other than just saying there's going to be a big vacant building that has I, so I don't buy into that.
Eric, since I've been in town in 1995, the diocese has owned 210 acres at 93rd and Broadway, and nothing's been done with that land. How long do you think it's going to take the diocese to redevelop Andrian if they left?
If they sell it. I mean
And finish up, please.
Thank you, Mr. January. Thank you. It's just the, the point of like, hearing a recording of you saying that you'll give that kind of money to Andrian seven days a week?
Yes, I would. Absolutely.
What about your police officers?
And I'd give it to the Boys and Girls Club for our disadvantaged youth. All of us ought to be on board with this Boys and Girls Club project. I can't even fathom that we're not taking care of the kids. All I hear from everybody coming up to the microphone is, what are we doing for the kids? This is what I'm doing for the kids.
Okay, well, when I was a single mom, 91
And I was raised by a single mom, too, ma'am, in South Bend.
Good for you. She'd be disappointed in your
No, she wouldn't, and I can guarantee you that.
When I was a single mom, there was a benefit for single moms to be able to have their children go to Boys and Girls Clubs, and it only cost me $10 a month per kid, $20 a month. Okay? So there are other ways that we can find to support organizations. I'm never going to say kids aren't important, I'm a mom and I'm a grandma, okay? So like, it's just saying that those organizations themselves are, okay? And I address you as, sir, on this point. They have options for other funding, but to say we get a 24-hour notice that there's a meeting on our property taxes coming up, and we've got to like, try and hustle together all this information, more time was needed. Emotions are high. Emotions are high everywhere right now financially, okay? Just finding the best solution for all the departments, instead of just rushing to, let's give millions of dollars. We're hearing that on the news all day long, okay? It's just, we want to be heard, we want the opportunity to not just be, oh, we're just going to go ahead and sweep this through and nobody's going to notice. Everyone's going to notice. I know the jobs here for all of you are hard, and they're all important, and I appreciate all of you for what you do. It's just emotionally, like, to hear someone say, we don't have enough money for 22 police officers, was a trigger. It was a trigger. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I hope that we get to a resolution.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment?
My name is Ramel Bryant, fifty-eight forty-five Adam Street. I am a homeowner, that means I pay taxes. The comment about you would give money to the Boys and Girls Club ten times over however much, and it's for the disenfranchised kids, I thought that's what the Barbara Dean was supposed to be about. Right? When the whole proposal for the Barbara Dean came about, it was, it was gonna be a place for the kids to go, a thing for the kids to do. And now our kids aren't even the ones that's using it, it's outside kids that are using it more than our own kids. So that's pretty hypocritical. Um, also, the operating costs of Michael Griffin, are salaries included in that?
Those are, yes.
Okay, so then.
Ms. Bryant, those absolutely are. And just so we're clear, we have about sixty-one, sixty-four police officers now. We need the additional amount to deliver the service at the level for a community our size needs, so I wanna make that clear. I'm not suggesting we don't have, we're trying to do the best with the number of officers that we have, but this additional metric, and it does include salaries.
Yeah, I wasn't referring to the police officers, I was referring to the overall operating costs that you mentioned.
They're, they're included, but it is not what boosted this necessarily.
But there will be increases in salaries.
That's a, the only one that's been budgeted for, Ms. Bryant, is a decision to give three percent, which will be done by paying a portion, uh, let me see if I can do this quickly and be clear. The pensions that everybody gets in town that are non-public safety officers that work full-time are a defined benefit pension. But it does include a little hybrid component, like an annuity. Three percent of employees are supposed to contribute their salary to that. The law allows us the option of paying that on behalf of our employees. And when we do that, we make a commitment, we're gonna do that for the balance of the time they're with us. That's in this budget too, that three percent, which costs us less because it basically becomes a pre-tax contribution instead of post-tax, which means that it's less money for us upfront, but it gives the same benefit to our workers in terms of that benefit. And depending on how this goes, and the study we're having done, the council will examine the issue of salaries later, but that is really the only salary that is contemplated in terms of an increase in compensation in this proposed budget.
Okay, and I'm aware that there was some issue with the police department's vehicles. Is, does that take into account that as well? Are we paying for new vehicles that?
That is a great question. We're working on that, but that's not an operating cost, it's a capital cost. And so we have plenty of resources for that. The issue about what you're asking has to do with that we got up to eight that basically can't be repaired and don't work, and the Indiana Lemon Law is not adequate to get them right. So our understanding, there's as many as two-hundred the state police have suffered. So we're trying very hard to convince the legal authorities of the state to take steps to get Chrysler to pay attention and honor their good faith with the product they deliver that wasn't usable for the purpose it was designed for. There'll be other ways to, to fix that problem, 'cause it's, in Indiana, the money that's used to do roads, to buy cars, to do buildings, is a lot easier to do than the ones to put people in them. That's been happening gradually over a series of years, and so your question's valid, it's just that this budget doesn't really propose anything like that, except what we would ordinarily have in the routine, not additional.
Okay. And then you also mentioned, um, about the taxes, uh, but there was no concrete number, so what percentage would those property taxes increase?
I could tell you those numbers, but yours won't. I, I have to reiterate, a majority of the people of Indiana amended our constitution. Governor Daniels actually proposed that because he wanted you to have relative budget certainty in a way like, you know that the seven percent sales tax won't change, and you can roughly calculate what your retail sales tax will be when you take a transaction. Property taxes always work differently like that, they work like that in all fifty states and the District of Columbia like that. But in this case, they said that your property tax bill, your charge for it can't be greater than one percent of your home. And if I heard you correct me, Ms. Bryant, you own your home.
I do, correct.
So it'd be one percent. Thank you, by the way, for being a homeowner in Maryville, we love that you wanna be here. It's one percent, and it can't exceed that. Now, the only thing that'll change that would be the value of your home does get reassessed in a, kind of an estimate that's done annually to try to capture the market for houses like yours, based on neighborhoods, but generally those aren't really great swells, but they can be.
Yeah, I just, my taxes actually did increase substantially, so that's why I'm here.
Yeah, well, we're not the only taxing unit of the multiple units that you pay into, but the limitation on that would only be one percent of the value of your home, the tax value. And that'd be fairly easy to take, uh, you can go online and find what your proposed tax bill would be. The very top, it says what the net assessed valuation, it uses that word, or the assessed valuation, actually.
Yeah, I'm aware of how to read my tax bill, thank you for that. Um, and then my other question was, oh, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to be helpful, Ms. Bryant.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, my other question was, um, what other options were sought out to remedy this, these issues that we're currently having? Were there, did we seek out any grants or anything? Like what, was it just, let's go straight to the taxpayers, or what?
Operating grants are hard to get, and again, they don't last as long as the employee's life with us. The best way to illustrate this is, if the maximum life of an allocation area, which has been raised here several times tonight, is being the reason for this, it's not. Now, there could be policy differences between your views about how the council uses those resources, but I assure you, those resources as a long-term solution are not prudent and not sustainable. They only last twenty-five years. We're already fifty-four years old. If allocation areas were imposed back in, in corporation, there'd be twenty-five years we'd be trying to figure out how to pay for police officers, and nobody wants to do that. So, to answer your question more directly, yes, this has been a conversation that has started when I arrived and has been ongoing, and I picked it up from conversations, it's been ongoing. Sometimes they're more formal in the form of committees, many times they're informal, between some members of the council in my office and other offices, but the short answer is yes. This is a step that we believe that we needed to take to begin the process. Again, knowing we'd have to explain this to a lot of people, including you, to try to assuage your anxiety about it, knowing it's not gonna impact you the way it looks. Social media is a real great boon. It makes information much more accessible than it ever was. The difficulty with it is not always correct and not always honest. It's difficult for me to find those places and try to get them to you, but we used all the steps that were possible to tell you that the law requires us to, that this was the meeting we were gonna have today. And we do use our social media that we operate, that we control the content on, to try to tell people about it. Um, I, I don't know if we have to fix our algorithm to make it so that you'll pick it up too, or more people will pick it up. We probably, or as Mr. Massarch said, I reminded him of his boring professors when he was in graduate school. I regret that. I do have a professorial manner, I apologize for that. But I'm trying to tell you, I'm talking as a professional hired by them and servant-hearted towards you, as they are, and trying to help you know, we're trying to take steps to augment public safety in a way that's needed, knowing it's unlikely to go the way it looks, but still having to do this, knowing we were gonna have these questions.
Right, okay, thank you so much, um, Mr. Griffin, I appreciate that. Um, I will also challenge the, uh, council to keep in mind that you have retirees that live in your community who are on fixed incomes, they're not elected officials, so they don't have supplemental incomes coming in every month. Uh, you have single mothers who live in this community. Um, so when you're thinking about making increases, substantial increases to taxes, you should consider the fact that people may actually want to leave if you increase their taxes too high. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. President, did everyone get a copy of, of this budget breakdown?
No.
Okay. If you could, I could, I could pass out a copy of it, what it, what it breaks down, 'cause Ms. Bryant, you just asked the question of the general fund, how much would the taxes increase if this was adopted and approved by the Department of Local Government Finance? Uh, the general fund would increase by seventy-seven point, uh, three percent. Uh, the motor vehicle highway fund would increase by three-hundred-and-sixty-one percent. A fund that is not included on here, the fire department, would increase by three-hundred-and-six percent. So, but these are all proposed, it's not necessarily saying that they're going to increase it by that amount, but they would, if they were granted that, they could increase it by that dollar amount.
If you'd like to have a copy of that form that Mr. January is talking about, it was an internal work product to help inform us, but not a secret. We have suggestion cards, if you'll fill it out to say your email address, if you have one, I'll be very pleased to send that to you.
Why don't we just post it on the town's Facebook page?
We can do that, too.
It's a very colorful pie chart, it'll be posted on the Facebook page, guys. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Beer, seventy-seven ninety-four Wright Street, and no, it's not a tax question, so Mr. [inaudible].
You just call me Mike or Michael, I'm really not vain about that.
Mike, it has nothing to do with you, it has to do with the police officer.
I'll be seated, thank you.
Navy, yeah, you can sit down. We live on Wit, Whitcomb and Foxmore there, and we're having problems with illegals coming and bringing tents and sleeping bags. And we have been very blessed with the two policemen that came the other day to look at the stuff and said that they were unable to do anything because it is not our property, this part of Foxmore. So what I would like to know is, who owns that property? 'Cause the police officer was very nice and said, so we went and we got rid of the sleeping bags and the tent and the suitcase and the tarp and everything. Because if you leave it there, you're going to have more than one person. By next week, we would have five.
Sure. Ma'am, let's, let's wait a second. Chaz, would you mind getting her address? And we'll take a look at this, ma'am, this is a hearing for the taxes.
Oh, well, I figured.
So, but thank you for that, we'll, we'll take a look.
I figured if I don't know, if I don't know, this is the place to find out.
Sure, absolutely. You're in the right place.
Okay, thank you.
Chaz, would you mind just getting with her real quick? Any other comments, public comments on the, the ordinance twenty-four dash forty?
Hi, I'm Helene Pero, seven eight six zero Wright Street, and I am a homeowner, homeowner as well. Um, my question first, um, I've done budgets, big budgets myself, so I understand that. Um, but what is the vision of the council if, um, not only just for the police, but what is the vision of this group and committee to see? 'Cause I take pride in where I live, and I'm sure everybody does too, and, and you wanna see a better Maryville. You want, you don't wanna see where we're looking like we're downgraded compared to our neighboring, 'cause even when I ride my bike on the bike trail, I can see where CP along the bike trail, you get to the Maryville section and it's not upkeep, so I just wondered what the vision was with the increase in taxes, not only on the police, I understand that.
Ms. Paris, I am the senior administrative officer for the town. One of my jobs is to speak with the policymakers, but the vision has to be theirs in consultation with the people we're serving. I can tell you, I am, there'll be things on my epitaph, I think, because of my service here. One of them will be, where's the ordinance for that? I say that all the time, I wanna know where the ordinance authority is. The other thing I say is, you at now fifty-four rough years, wonderful achievement for a community, what about the next fifty-four? And I realize that's a lot to ask, there's statistical outliers after five, but you're right to ask us that, and it's something that we're talking about. Where do we want Maryville to be in that next five, ten, twenty-five, and fifty years? This is a first step towards that. Sometimes the way state law's written in the budget process, even though we can be, we can do more than that, it really kind of fortifies looking at it year to year. We're trying not to. I believe we've had officials, including this council and those before it, that didn't do it year to year entirely because you couldn't have gotten to fifty-four years without that. The laws also got changed kind of under us, and if anybody was advising, and I'm not saying this, council, I'm saying about twenty years earlier, before twenty years earlier, it might have changed, but it's a very important question you're posing, it's something that we need. The only other thing I'm gonna add, at the risk of going a little far, I know who I'm in front of, my bosses, we're trying to do a lot of things at once. We know quality of life and quality of place is very important to a community. And for the most part, Maryville's really good at that, you have a lot going on. We do know that we gotta dedicate some of those resources that have been asked about tonight to help the curb appeal of the very northern part of that Broadway Mall that remarkably is doing great economically, it's fully filled and those are viable businesses. We just wanna change the psychology of that by just making it look a little nicer, that is something we can do, it's something we talk about doing, and we're gonna try to develop a plan. Now, we've got all these things we're gonna try to do, I just can't do them all overnight, even with all the help. We wanna make it so we have sufficient officers, so that the feeling of well-being and public safety makes more people wanna locate here, including businesses that are more retail and, and session, so I'm with you on that. We also believed that there was economic development and community development rationale to give some incentive, once we knew that there was some decision being made to keep Andrain here. We tried to make it as possible, as much as possible, as a public investment, partly even if it's gonna be used by them a great deal, that the street we're talking about, it's also gonna free up the traffic bind that we have about three o'clock every day as they let out, you all know it, on Broadway. I was, and the officers, we have to dedicate to that, to help keep traffic flow that could be otherwise patrolling. So it's all of a kind. We also know that there's a psychology, I don't know how to give you empirical evidence for that, Ms. Paris, but we know that if that place had been allowed to go, we think the psychology of that area would have destabilized. And the successes that are already going on in the, the Crossroads Plaza, not fully full, but some things are going on, it would have been more difficult for us to bring it back from where it is. That's the reasoning. Is it perfect judgment? It is not, it is informed judgment based on consultants that have helped the town before and people who've done this sort of thing before. It's, I wish it were a perfect science, sometimes it's more art than that. And that's why we were doing it. It's also a community development thing, it's part of the vision, to have a companion to the Dean and Barbara White Center. What that's envisioned to be is a Parks and Recreation Community Center, and we've not been able to get that staffed and running at the level, based on our business and our funding model, to get there, was one of the reasons that informed the decision to do a food and beverage tax. Once that's up and fully running, and we have the staffing that can program that, we think we'll have adult athletics and programming for young people as well. But it'll be complimentary, too, in what the, the Boys and Girls Club can do, 'cause they already have organizational capacity for not leg football, not totem pole painting, but for the kind of life skills that they help young adults get by coming after school as a place to go. That's not things that Parks and Recreation Departments traditionally build, but we thought that there could be synergies between the two. Now, that's the judgment, I think, that informed those decisions, it's part of the vision you're talking about, and we absolutely need to refine that more. They took a first step, we've gotta take the final step of adopting what they've called Maryville Momentum, which is about our long-range planning goals, but that can't be where we stop. You're right to point that out, or imply it in your question. I hope I've been responsive to you.
Yeah. No, that was very good, I just, I think that if there is an increase in taxes, whatever, minimal or whatever.
Yes.
I think as a community, we need to see what, visually as well, not just in operating costs or.
I absolutely.
It should be something like, okay, twenty-one more police officers. This is gonna be a great town, a safe town.
Yes.
You can go to Hidden Lake Park and not be bothered, or the Prusen Park, something like that, your families can enjoy this and, and have a safe time and a fun time.
That's a good point, ma'am.
So, that's what I just wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paris.
So, before we, uh, thank you, ma'am. So some of our issue here, too, with us being a very young town, you know, Michael mentioned Highland, where he came from with thirty-three years of service. Highland's been around a lot longer than Maryville.
A hundred plus.
All these, yeah, over a hundred years. So all of our neighboring cities and towns were here. If you guys recall, we just used to be Ross Township, and in seventy-one, we finally incorporated. I think it was the very next year, and Dan helped me out here with some of this history, the, uh, circuit breaker went into effect, the frozen tax levy, as we called it.
Frozen levy, dude.
Frozen levy. And so Maryville was struck with that, where we couldn't even raise taxes, but a very small percentage. We started out with thirteen police officers, and you all know that that wasn't enough, we just got by. We started out with a very small street department, and we had a public, uh, in building office, or, uh, planning and building office, and that was it. That's how Maryville started. But Maryville is such an attractive place, we're growing by leaps and bounds. We just added a neighborhood, Liberty Estates, it's gonna be a thousand units, a thousand units, that's what, two-point-three is it, chief? People, per unit? We don't have police officers to patrol that. We have to keep up with the growth of the town. We can't tell developers, no, don't come here because our budget's kinda low. No, we have to address the budget so we can grow proportionately with the development. No, we have to address the budget so we can grow proportionately with the development. We had to get creative with these TIF districts. I know it's a controversial issue. Many of you don't understand it, it's very complex. But we can only use those funds for certain things. So this is more in closing, okay? I know it's been long. This is our appeal to the state, to say, "Look, we need help with our budget. We need help with more funding to take care of our growth rate." Does it mean we're going to raise it up to $20 million general fund budget? It doesn't, guys. It doesn't. But it gives us the opportunity then to raise it to a point where we need it to get by. So Brian, don't laugh. Brian, please. I'm trying to explain something here. You want to, you want to have communications, and you're going to sit there and make, you know...
You keep lying.
It's not lying. It's not lying. It's what it is. And so this is our appeal to the state.
You have 50 years to work this out, and you're like, you still don't have enough money. And I appreciate your attention. I'm left at that because it's like, I don't understand it.
Okay.
You've known that there's this problem, and you...
All right, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian. Thank you. You had your public comment time, okay? Please, sir. Because he's laughing during, during the conversation here. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
And the key is, we need restraint. We may need tax dollars to do a lot of stuff, but we need some sort of fiscal restraint. We've been giving the town's money away and has put us partially in this hole.
All right. We will close the public hearing portion, seeing no other comments. Mr. Griffin, did you want us to take action on this 24-40 tonight in first reading?
Mr. President, it is your custom. I've read your ordinances several times. It is your custom, it does need to be formally introduced, and you do take a vote with first reading, but that's just a vote on first reading. It's not at all what you're going to finally be dealing with in October. And we may, if we're still working on reconciliation, we did this once, I was here to experience that. One of the reasons we've made this earlier than the cycle, we have until November 1st, we might need you to get a continuance next meeting, October 8th, so that we can reconcile more. But my answer is, it's customary for you to have a first reading that occasions a vote. So we do need to have that, so that only, you won't have to go through suspension of the rules when you consider this in October.
Thank you. We'll entertain a motion then for approval of 24-40 on first reading only.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Neal with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval on first reading to advance this further and further discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing now Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Griffin, and thank you, public, for your comments. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for September 24th, the AP register summary for ARP purchases for September 24th, the approval of the town council meeting minutes of September 10th, the approval of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Committee meeting minutes from June 27th and July 25th and August 22nd, and the approval of the Personnel and Employee Benefits Committee meeting minutes of August 30th, the approval of the Council Affairs Committee meeting minutes for September 4th, the approval of the ARPA Committee meeting minutes of September 9th, and the contract approval for Attorney Shawna Levinson to represent the PD Chief Nussis and administration.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Yuzlak with a second by Councilor Neal for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, Budget and Finance, Vice President Neal.
No additional comments. President Bella, thank you.
Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. Michael, I believe you have an ordinance for the personnel policy you're going to be discussing tomorrow, correct?
Mr. President? Mr. Chairman, yes. Any changes to that policy document require a circulation of the proposals in writing to the department heads and a discussion to get feedback, and then that's what we're going to do tomorrow during that. That is correct. It still has to come back to Council Affairs, because you haven't had a chance to go over some of the policy changes that are in there, including a travel policy. So my hope is, after we get the feedback from department heads, I'll report that to the Council Affairs Committee at a future date.
All right. And obviously, that will go to Mr. Sefenoff and Mr. Hall before I schedule a committee meeting, correct?
I will take that path if you wish me to. Yes, sir.
Well, I would like to look at the proposed recommendations.
And we have a couple more, right? Do we have to take up?
Yes.
Correct. All right, then I'll, I'll get with Michael and Joe to call the committee meeting.
I thank you.
Street Department, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Maryville Road, where they did the sealing of the cracks, that has been completed, correct, Steve? Steve Keen? And branches will be picked up until September 30th. So if you have any more branches, any that went down from your park, put it out by the curb. You have until September 30th. And Creekwood Crossing, Steve, they have called for a stop sign and additional no parking signs. Did you look into that? You were going, I talked to Kevin at the, last week, I believe.
Yeah, we've, we've actually looked at it and have come up with a couple solutions, so.
Oh, did you? Good. And Ms. Bishop has called again about a street light in Foxmore. Did you report that light as being out?
Yeah, that, so that's the street light she keeps talking about, there are parks on order for that from Midwestern Electric, there was some damage done, and we just, we haven't got them yet. But she, she reminds us every day that the light's out.
Oh, thank you, Steve. I know, I've had several calls. And that's my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh.
Mr. King, can you give the requirements for branch pickup? Like, what can you take, or what can you not take?
So the branch, so the branch pickup, we will, we will, branches that are free of dirt and debris, free of garbage, anything less than six inches in diameter can run through the chipper. We will spend 20 minutes per location picking up branches, because we have to run through the whole town. The town runs from 53rd Avenue to 101st Avenue. It's a very, very large area. So, yeah, you know, we're, we're limited, we get what we can, and that's the, that's the parameters of the...
Is there a place that people can take branches if they pick them up themselves?
Yeah, so we'll take, so we'll take branches at our north facility at 5750 Tyler Street, which is just south of the Prusen Center. We'll take them there up until October 1st. After that, they can be brought to our facility at 13 West 73rd Avenue. We will, we will collect them there after October 1st.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing else, President.
Thank you. We go on to Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification. Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We're still waiting to get updates on the gateway signs, to get those pricings in. We will be scheduling a meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks, and that's all.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, I will defer to Councilor Neal and Mr. Lake during their reports on Lake County Solid Waste and Stormwater.
Very good. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Ms. Hardaway.
Thank you, President Bella. We do have, we spoke about the community center. So we do have numerous job postings currently available. If you go to the maryville.in.gov and go under the Human Resource tab, there are several positions for Event Manager, Site Supervisor, Front Desk Attendant that are currently posted. They'll be coming down soon, but they are currently posted. So we are actively trying to staff the community center. As far as employee benefits, we will be rolling into insurance renewal time come November, so we will be having meetings with staff about the upcoming selection of the insurance plans. And in that, I have nothing else, President Bella.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Hardaway.
Public Safety, I will defer to Chief Nussis's report when it is his time. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. We had a Redevelopment Commission meeting before the council meeting today, and then the two most important items were securing right-of-way for the 69th Mississippi Roundabout, where we have received federal funding in the amount of $3 million. Steve has presented those to us, along with, through Butler, Fairman, and Seifert. The RDC approved those to acquire those two. Those would be on the northwest quadrant, right, Steve?
Yes.
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 And that's all for the RDC.
Thank you. Utility Liaison, Councilor Leona Chandler Felton.
No report at this time, President Bella.
Thank you. Parks, Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, we have, as Councilor Hardaway alluded to, personnel items at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. We will have our standing for Thursday of the month, meeting at 5:00 at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. We will be talking about personnel. Michael always does an excellent job going through the budget. And we have a call on the HVAC system as the first item on the agenda, with the report that we allocated $7,700 to do the energy audit, and we will have that report at 5:00, correct, Michael?
Yes, sir, that's our expectation.
That's all.
Thank you.
I do have another question.
Ms. Hardaway, please.
For Mr. King, Prusen Park, what is the status of that walkway? And is it still currently blocked off?
So it is still currently blocked off. That was, the boardwalk itself is being handled by Mr. Neal. He's been talking to contractors about that. I don't know where he's at with that. But that's something he started, and he wants to continue with that. Also, there's a section, when you get off the boardwalk, a rubberized path that's, that's in need of repair. And when our paving contract gets going, we're going to take that little stretch of rubberized surface up and repay that stretch of the walkway.
Thank you so much. That's all.
Michael, I'm sorry, Keisha. Michael, if you would, add that, and Mike always attends our committee meetings, just brief him for an update when Keisha and I and the rest of the committee members are there Thursday night on the Prusen Center boardwalk.
Thank you, President Bella.
We go on to the abandoned and blighted properties, Councilor Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a certified training on last Friday led by Michael Griffin, our town manager. This included Police Chief Nussis, our code enforcement officers Tiffany, Dave, and Barb, Judge Jicas, Attorney Ricardo, and Ms. Sheila Shine of Planning and Building, and myself. It was a very informative training, and it will be some ongoing training as well, while we all learn what needs to be done and how to get it done properly for that committee.
Great, thank you. How about the Semi-Quincentennial Committee?
Very good. Nothing to report at this time, President Bella.
I've been practicing.
Yes, you have. Thank you.
Special Town Projects, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We have our truck or treat scheduled October 24th at the Dean and Barbara Center from 5:30 to 7:30. We have 20 groups that are registered thus far, still hoping to get a little more. And then our regular trick-or-treating for the town is on Halloween, October 31st, and that's also from 5:30 to 7:30. And that's all for our special projects.
Very good, thank you. Department and Commission Reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mrs. Neal.
Yes, thank you again, President Bella. I had a meeting last Thursday, lots of information. We sat through a little presentation by Republic Services about recycling, Reimagine, something we probably can, I can discuss and share with you guys during one of our workshops. It was pretty interesting. They have the hazardous waste collection is over for this month. The next one is October 19th, Griffith Public Works, and that's 134 South Colfax in Griffith from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. That is on a Saturday. They have a couple of new programs that they were telling us about that sound very interesting called Worm Bends, where they're taking them out to the schools and they're teaching them about how to recycle a worm. But the program is, it sounds very interesting, but the funny thing about it is that it's completely booked already for the spring, for fall and spring.
Okay.
So I was just throwing that out there, just to let people know. But they have adult seminar series, the 1st of October at 6:00 p.m. at the actual building there, the Lake County Solid Waste Building, and they're going to have a new knitting class, if anyone is interested in participating in that, and then an adult snack and craft, it's called an adult snack and craft, and it's going to be a knitting class. So I was thinking, as a council, we can go and, you know, nice dress release. And the final thing, the final thing they have is a costume, Halloween costume swap. So you can bring one of your children's costumes that, you know, you pay all that good money for, and they can wear it but one time, and you can swap it out for another costume. But you have to bring one in order to get one. So they have a swap shop. That's pretty neat. I thought that was pretty neat. Saturday, October 5th, from 8:00 to noon. And that's also located at the district at 8695 Broadway. And the next meeting, September, October, November, November, September.
You'll let us know.
I'll let you know. And that's it.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, our appointee is Ms. Hardaway.
Short term is NERCy. The meeting was last Thursday, September 19th. Although I was not physically present, I did attend through YouTube, and what was discussed was the resolution of 24-07. So the State Board of Accounts came in and gave a little brief overview. They talked about the auditing process, how frequent, what causes frequency to increase on audits for all municipalities, and how they go about looking at the finances of municipalities and what they target and what, what causes the red flags to show up for them. So it was kind of briefly a little education, but it was also in response to the resolution that NERCy has. If anybody wants to watch the meeting, it is on YouTube, and all you have to do is put in NIRPC, and the meetings will come up. Also, a transportation study was done. It was conducted with interviews from nonprofits throughout Lake and Porter and Lepore County. It is a big document, so if you want to see the PDF of it, it is also online. Or we can place it online. I can give it to Chaz, and he can place that online, because it's a lot of information. Once again, as we go through, it's public transportation, how it's being used, and that's railway and bus services. So a lot of good information for our, all of our communities. That is all, President Bella.
Thank you. Stormwater Management Resources, Director Lake.
Thank you. We opened sealed bids for our Southmore Park Drainage Improvement Project on September 3rd. The numbers came in higher than I'm comfortable with. So I met with Robinson Engineering. I have some suggestions. I believe what I'm going to recommend is that we modify the plans and rebid the project. I think we could shave off a couple hundred thousand dollars with those modifications. So I'm just trying to be as physically responsible as we can, knowing that money's tight. Project at 69th and Connecticut, I already expressed concerns with the delays. Grimmer will be out there next week to commence again on the project, and they will, again, aggressively install the rest of that pipe, get that project done, and that'll be another one checked off of our list. one checked off of our list. We also have out for bid right now, the Hickory Ridge Flood Control Project. This is a regional project, will be opening bids on October 1st. And so soon thereafter, we want the contract to initiate construction on that project. Again, I want to thank the Little Cal, we'll be getting almost a million dollars in cost share that will come back to us. So that'll be a reimbursement. So again, that helps out our budget and stretches our dollars further. Robinson Engineering is also about 45% complete on the Country Club addition and Country Club Unit A improvement over there. That's north of 61st Avenue and east of Taft. And that's it for now. Well, I can keep going on, but it's been a long meeting. There.
Fire Territory Board, Mrs. Neal.
No report, President Bella, thank you.
Mr. President, through Councilors Neal and Hardaway, I would like to call a redevelopment, a Joint Redevelopment Commission Fire Territory Board Workshop for October 22nd at 5:00 p.m. before our regular RDC meeting. The purpose of this, ladies and gentlemen, is to begin the discussion on the Southside Fire Station in the 9,0910 block of Colorado, which has been identified by Chief Yurga. I've been in contact with the property owner. There will be, hopefully, a property donation that Joe and I are working on, but we need to sit and discuss with the Territory Board and the RDC how we go about doing this.
Thank you.
Could you repeat that date?
October 22nd at 5:00.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Yep.
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Lake.
Mr. January.
Mr. Lake, the work that we're doing at the Hickory Ridge, is that on property that we own, or is that private property?
It's a property that they own and that we own. So the portion, the regional basin portion is going to be on property they own, but we got an easement from their board. It took three years to get the easement. So that was a tough process to get through, because the board kept shifting and changing. And so, and then the right-of-way portion at the intersection there will be, everything will be replaced. So there's a pump station there. There's a lot of elements to this plan, so the storage, conveyance, a pump station. So all those elements will be a part of the plan. Again, I think we should have a ribbing cutting or a shovel groundbreaking ceremony for this project, because it does help to protect about 400 residents in the area. Again, this is a regional base project, so something that we have thoroughly engineered and something that we had the full support of the Little Calm at River Basin Development Commission, because it's part of our master plan. And in working with them, it's part of their master plan. So it's a good cooperative effort, and I'm thankful that we're getting the cost share. I wish we'd get some federal dollars towards that as well, but we tried that as well.
Okay. And this is not the retention pond that's behind the apartments, or is this the thing that's on the south side of the street that you all?
It's going to be on the east side. It's not the one in the center, which is a centerpiece. It provides some detention, but not thoroughly. I think that was probably from excavation when the development was constructed. And then, but it does have an outlet pipe. We're going to actually look at that as well. But it's not going to be there. It's going to be on the east side portion of the property that they don't own. I could share the plans with you and all the details. But yeah, it's been a project that's been on our radar and part of our master plan, and something that we've been eyeing for a while now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Lisa Roberts, Parks Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our parking lot project took a little detour because of all the rain the last couple of days, but they're hoping to start reseal coating and striping the lines. Open gym for kids has been slow-going, but it is starting to pick up a little bit. And our self-defense class is also very slow-going, so we have pushed it back a couple more weeks to try to get some more publicity for it, because I would really like to see it take off, but it's not happening as fast as I would like it to. And that's my report.
Thank you.
President Bella, Lisa, can you expand on what day's time for the self-defense class?
So the self-defense class, ours, Tuesdays and Thursdays. He does three different classes. He does a five-to-10-year-old from 5:30 to 6:30, and then an 11 to 16 from 6:30 to 7:30, and then 17 and above from 7:30 to 8:30. It's $80 for a four-week session, which would be including two, so it's actually eight classes for $80 for residents of Maryville, and then 85 for non-residents. So they would actually get, like I said, eight classes in that session time, so.
Thank you. Thank you, President Bella.
Okay.
Police Department Chief Nuses.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to start off with an update with the hot topic of last, of the last meeting, and that was the illegal slash undocumented people that we're receiving here in Maryville that were coming in. We have started to see a decline in the amount of people that we have seen. From what we have known, probably right around 50% of people that we knew were here. One of the steps that we did take, and I think, once again, Town Manager Michael Griffin, he accompanied me, with a meeting that we had with the elected state officials. While we didn't have a direct cure-all to this, we did get some options, and one of them actually worked, one that I didn't think was going to work, and that was that temporary protected status. What that does is allow some of these people to have a temporary protected status, so they're actually legally able to work in the United States, and that's what a lot of them were actually seeking. Through the use of Google Translate, thank God for that, and quite a bit of moving around and talking to a lot of these people, we were able to convince them that you have other areas that can offer that. Chicago is one of the main areas that you do get this temporary protective status. So using this and just letting people know and having that communication that, hey, you're not allowed to be out here, has brought down the numbers. Now, I have been getting calls from some of these other chiefs in some of these areas not too far away saying, hey, we just got some of your people here. And I said, I can't help you, you know, there's just, I just informed them what we had done, and hopefully it works for them as well, right? But that was one of the things I wanted to bring up. And ma'am, thank you for letting us know about this incident in Wicom in Foxmore. I'll look into it. I don't have the, I was under the assumption it was homeless, because there are some homeless people, too, that have been setting up encampments. The one by the old Kmart over there behind FedEx, if you go by there, it's gone. So I have to applaud Tiffany Thomas on that one. She got in contact with the owner, and we were able to get that stuff cleaned up. So that is one of those, this is a win, I feel, for all of us, and we're starting to see less and less of it, so it's going to continue that way. The other problem, the other one I want to touch on is, I know everybody's familiar with AI, artificial intelligence. We've been getting a lot of scams now, where they're actually calling people and having the voice recording of one of your family members, friends, et cetera, and they're scheming people out of money. One of the ones they're using is they're saying that they're calling from jail, and they have that person's voice, and it sounds exactly like your son, like your mother, like your friend, like your cousin. It sounds exactly like that. So please do not give anybody money over the phone. That's one of the things I really wanted to hammer on tonight. Do not give anybody any money. Do not give, nobody's going to call and ask, no jail, nobody's going to call and ask for money over the phone. You're going to have to go pay the bail bond at the jail, or if it's a federal agency saying that you owe them money, they are not going to take payment over the phone. You're going to have to make it in person. So that's one of the other things I wanted to be clear on and make everybody aware of. The last one I want to touch on, and I'm really proud of this one, because one of the things we discussed a couple of meetings ago was some of the steps that we have taken to reduce the violent crime in Maryville. In 2023, we had the lowest amount of homicides in over a decade. That's something that I'm very proud of, and very proud of my officers. We had a huge reduction in violent crime. And here we go into 2024 now, and we're still the lowest that we have, or even lower than last year. And this came. And I can't take the credit for this as my officers, and this is something that we looked at, and we looked at it really hard, and we wanted to make a difference so we don't have any type of violent crime. So we did neglect, we did neglect some of the other things. A lot of our resources got focused onto this stuff. Kind of suffered in the means of traffic stops, traffic tickets, et cetera, right? So for this month, we have had approximately 2,500 calls for service. That's about average. The average amount of traffic stops that officers were doing monthly were right around the 400 range. For August, we made 994 traffic stops. And for September, so far, we haven't even finished the month off, and we're at 1,350 traffic stops. So these guys are really killing it. They're really, really making some huge sacrifices, because at any given time, we only got about six to seven officers on the road, right? So we're learning ways that we can still kind of try and suppress what we have been doing. We want to still continue to suppress the violent crime, but at the same time, we're trying to see if we can get some more activity in the areas of traffic enforcement and community policing. So we're trying. As always, if we see a number, if we see our numbers start to jump up, we're going to go back to what we were doing. But I wanted to say how proud I am of my officers for making those sacrifices and really, honestly, working for almost their entire shift without a break. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Good work. How many of you feel like you saw those 900 drivers out there? Absolutely.
See them in front of Broadway all the time.
Moving on to the Planning and Building Department, Sheila Shine.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Riley for posting the rental registration ordinance on the website. We've had quite a few people contact us requesting a copy of the rental registration, because they didn't know that they needed to register their rental property. And we also had some, the residents who live in rental property calling to see, is my property registered? Is my property registered? So with that, we've registered quite a few new properties this year, so I'd like to thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Street Department, Mr. King.
So on top of what Councilwoman Uselek said earlier, we are continuing also to maintain the parks as we do every day. But I also want to say that Monday, September 16th, at 12:01 p.m. in this very room, we opened sealed bids for our 2024 street resurfacing program. We received two bids, one from Reese Riley Construction, the other one from Milestone Contractors North. We had an engineer's estimate of $7,68,016. Reese Riley came in with a bid of $8,136,741. Milestone came in with a bid of $6,559,272.70. The bidding documents and the bid tabs have been reviewed, and I'd like to recommend that we award our 2024 street resurfacing program to Milestone Contractors North on the amount of $6,559,272.70.
Motion to award the bid, Mr. President.
We have a motion from Mr. Pettit to award the bid to Milestone for the amount of $6,559,272.70. Second. Mrs. Uselek seconded the motion. Open for discussion.
Mr. King, that's a $1.5 million difference, roughly. I forget what the figure was. Does Milestone, are they really true to the contract? Are they doing change orders? Because that's a significant difference.
That's just what their bid come in at. I mean, there's no, there's no anticipated change orders.
They've been the lowest bidder, Mr. January, for probably the last five years.
I was going to ask Steve, are they keeping the prices from the last time we bid?
No, no, these are, you know, these are all updated prices. See, what you got to realize, too, is a lot of companies, you know, some companies will throw bids at this, you know, high bids just to try to get to work, even though they don't want it. They bid it, so, you know, obviously, the Milestone, you know, contractors, you know, was hungry and bid it to get it, and obviously, they need the work, so that's why they come in at what they did. And they were only, you know, $400,000 underneath the, underneath the engineer's estimate. I was very happy with, very happy with the prices that we got in.
There was a milestone.
And there was another one, $7 million.
Well, the $7 million was the engineer's estimate.
Yeah.
So it came $400,000 underneath that. Then, but then Reese Riley came over a million over that.
Yeah, they were 8.1.
Okay, 8.1.
So, yeah.
Any other discussion on the motion from the councilors?
Now, that, Steve, that includes the 6.559, that includes what we talked about in the workshop as far as in Ward 6 in Ameriplex.
Yes.
Coming out of the Broadway allocation, so.
It has nothing to do with how we're going to pay for it.
Right. But we did the $6 million bond issue.
Right. And then the 1 point, whatever it was for the.
1.3, I believe.
From the tip to whatever.
Right, from the tip, yeah.
Any other discussion, councilors? Hearing on, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, anything else to add from administration tonight?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. January, thank you. You have my report, the monthly report, that's a compilation of the contributions from all the department heads. It's imminently readable, I hope, unless you have a question about that. If you'll forbear me, however, I do want to make sure I remind some of you. We have an ordinance that you passed at a prior meeting. That is a zoning ordinance, and at the request of the petitioner, he's decided he wanted all the council members who voted in favor to sign off on it. The vice president's been gracious to already have signed, so I'm hopeful you'll just stay around long enough at adjournment to allow me to get your signatures affixed to about four copies of the enrolled, one of which is the original, will go in our ordinance book. I forbear me for having to ask you this way. I just hope that I'm in your mind, so you don't depart too quickly tonight before I get a chance to get your signatures. Apart from that, unless there's a question about my report, I'll be very content to sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on tonight to general orders, we have no first reading ordinances. Second reading ordinance is ordinance 24-32. It's an ordinance to amend the Maryville Municipal Code to include the payment in advance of board and commission allowance law as currently enforced as ordinance number 21-09. This ordinance will amend and clarify the terms of ordinance 2109 and incorporate these provisions in the Maryville Municipal Code. This is really some housekeeping that we're doing, right, Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, it is. It essentially updates an existing ordinance you have. It's a standalone ordinance, we want to get it back into the code.
Motion to approve ordinance 2432, Mr. President.
Second.
You have a motion from Mr. Pettit with a second by Councilor Neal. Questions or comments on the motion? Already did public comment on this, right, Mr. Griffin? Last meeting, I believe?
That is correct, Mr. President, and it would be up to the council president to make a determination if you wanted to add some, but there's no legal requirement.
Let's just move on. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries, second reading. Moving on to ordinance 24-35. It's an ordinance amending to Town Code Chapter 7.5 entitled Fire and Hazardous Materials Safety to provide for the establishment or relationship with, excuse me, single-point repository service companies and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselek, the second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of ordinance 24-35 on second reading. Open for discussion. Hearing on, Mr. January.
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, that motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 24-36. It's an ordinance amending Town Code Chapter 7.5 entitled Fire and Hazardous Materials Safety to establish a Knox Box keyed system. This is the requirement to have businesses have a lockbox in front of their property so that firefighters can utilize a key to gain access during an emergency.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Councilor Neal. Was it she?
She.
Councilor Sheeh.
Amen.
For approval on second reading. Questions or comments? Hearing on, Mr. January.
Sure. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, that motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 24-37. It's an ordinance amending Town Code Sections 7.5, 1 through 132 entitled Prohibitions, and 7.5 through 133 entitled Enforcement, and 7.5 through 134 entitled Penalties, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith.
Motion to approve ordinance 24-37.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Neal with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of 24-37 on second reading. Open for discussion. Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. That motion carries. Moving on to ordinance number 24-38. This is a joint ordinance of the town of Maryville, Indiana, and a resolution of the Township Board of Ross Township, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of said town and appropriating the proceeds of the same for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the cost of renovating the Maryville Fire Protection Territory's North Fire Station, the construction of the storage facility, and the purchase of equipment and a fire truck for the Maryville Fire Protection Territory, together with necessary and equipment costs and bonds therefore. I don't know who writes these, I digest. Is there a motion for approval?
A motion to approve.
Counselor she. I recognize Counselor she as the motion.
Second.
Mrs. Neal, would you like to second that?
Yes, I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Neal. Open for discussion. Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Mr. Count, Mr. January.
Seven in favor, I apologize.
Thank you. That motion carries then. Moving on to ordinance 24-39. It's an ordinance of the Town Council of the town of Maryville, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of the Town of Maryville, Indiana taxable economic development tax increment revenue bonds, Series 2024, for the Boys and Girls Club of Northwest Indiana Project, including bond anticipation notes and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit.
Second.
Second by Counselor she for approval of ordinance 24-39. Open for discussion.
I believe everyone knows my position.
I believe you've stated it quite a few times, actually, Mr. January.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Stated again. We're giving gifts, and we're asking people for close to a 77% tax increase. It doesn't make sense.
Is there any public comment on this ordinance?
Brian Messarch, 201 East 68th Place. I agree 1,000% with Mr. January. The Boys and Girls Club does not need our money whatsoever. We should be building our own Parks Department and taking care of ourselves. We don't need the Boys and Girls Club to do that.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Paul Dawning, longtime resident of Maryville, also the president of the Bridgewood HOA, and I am a board member for the Boys and Girls Club. I'm the vice chair. I'd just like to give a different perspective because with my time here in this city, I've always been for the kids. So the Boys and Girls Club is not looking for a handout. We're looking for a community involvement, community engagement. We're not, this is a project that is going to be huge, and the money's that the city is going to partnership with us. That's what we're looking for, is a partnership. We're not looking to be a part of increasing the taxes. We're looking to help out our children in this city.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Justin, the CEO, President of the Boys and Girls Club of Great Northwest Indiana. I appreciate everyone's time and certainly have an incredible amount of respect for the work that you do because I know it's very, very difficult. I appreciate the opportunity just to kind of reiterate the importance of the work that's being done at the Boys and Girls Club and the impact that it's having on the Maryville youth on a day-in, day-out basis. I'm thrilled to have Mashawn Chamberlain, who's our site director, with us in the audience today, and he's the true hero of it all because he's the one that's at the club each and every day. And what I can specifically share with you about with the status of the Maryville Club today, of course, you all know, we're currently at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. We have space there that we lease, and it allows us to serve, based on certain restrictions of space and so forth, it allows us to serve a maximum by agreement, a maximum of 50 kids per day. It is also restricted to 7th and 8th graders at Pierce Middle School. So it's 7th and 8th graders from Pierce Middle School coming to the Boys and Girls Club. And we're thrilled, and I credit Mashawn with his efforts in terms of trying to encourage as many kids as possible to come to the club because he and all of us can appreciate the value that having a space like that has. Right now, we have 60 members, which is a great membership total. The difficulty with that is if all 60 showed up on any given day, we'd be in excess of the 50, 50 kid capacity. So we're very, very limited with what we do. I know we've had, and I had an opportunity to be at the club with Mashawn two weeks ago yesterday, and he explained to me the thrill of having more kids at the club, which is wonderful, and also the difficulty that we have because we're so limited in our space. And one thing he shared with me is that he knows the kids from previous years. We have 7th and 8th graders restricted. And as he shared with me the difficulty that he's had with a couple of the kids in the sense that several of those kids that were in 8th grade last year as part of our club moved on to 9th grade. And as a result of our agreement and as a result of our capacity, for those kids who want to come to the club, there's no place for them to go. And specifically shared with me that he has a couple of kids who have no place to go, want to go to the club, but it's restricted based on space. And so they're spending time after school at the Dairy Queen or at Little Caesar's waiting for whoever it is to come pick them up. Clearly not a good situation. Last year, as you know also, we bought the property next to the Dean and Barbara White Community Center with the intention of building a purpose-built club. And we have six other purpose, or eight other purpose-built clubs throughout Lake and Porter County. And our hope was that we'd be able to build a purpose-built club that we could be proud of, that could certainly complement the work that's being done at the community center and get more people, more adults, more youth in that particular site and get better utilization of that facility that we've talked about. We bought that property with the intention and commitment that we would receive the $2 million from the town of Maryville, which we're incredibly appreciative of. That's $200,000 from the TIF over 10 years. That would, for us, provide the seed money, what I'll call seed money, or commitment that would leverage us to go out and go on an exhaustive capital campaign to raise the additional $6 to $7 million that it will take to build the project on that particular property. And we've committed to do that. With the passage of this, we will immediately work to secure the funding, the rest of the funding. We will work on the design, we'll work on the construction just as soon as humanly possible because we can appreciate and understand the need for having the club in the town of Maryville as soon as possible. I believe it's an investment in the community. I believe it's an investment, in my view, most importantly, for the youth of Maryville, and this would serve generations of kids and families for decades. I had the pleasure of cutting the ribbon last Wednesday at our South Haven Club, which went through a $5.5 million renovation project in the community of South Haven, a community that doesn't have a whole lot of economic development, doesn't have a whole lot of business, and doesn't have a whole lot of people who are able to support the club with significant donations and so forth. But we're proud to get that capital campaign complete, $5.5 million invested into the community of South Haven. And I can tell you that if you went to that ribbon cutting or talked to anybody that has any awareness whatsoever of the South Haven Club, they can tell you the importance that that club has had on that community since 1982. It's been there for 42, 42 years. With the renovation that we put in, it'll be there for another 42 years. And it's a generational thing where it's kids, it's their parents, it's the grandparents, all who have served, been served so well by the Boys and Girls Club. And they talk about the impact that it's had on their particular life and also on their community. There's been a little bit of, I think, a misunderstanding perhaps about how the Boys and Girls Club operates in terms of funding. I can assure you that our funding mechanisms are minimal. Our revenue streams are minimal. What we do ask, because part of what we do is we want to make sure that we're there to serve all kids and especially those kids that need us the most. So our fees are very, very low, very intentionally low. So we can't raise membership rates in an arbitrary sort of way. We're very limited and very cognizant that we want to be affordable so the people of the community have a place to send their kids. So just to put that in perspective, we don't have $100 million budget, which I think had been reported in the past. We have a $10.5 million budget in Lake and Porter County, which services 21 sites, 10 clubs, and 11 additional kids stop sites in different schools. So it's 21 sites. All of that funding comes from, it does come from grants, and it comes from donors, individual and corporate donors, and very little of it comes from what we charge the families, what we charge the kids. Put that in perspective, there's 180 school days in a school year, if I remember right. And our school year fee is $75 for the school year. And keep in mind that if families can't afford that $75 for the school year, and if there are veterans and other criteria, we waive the fee, it's a reduced fee, or we work it out so that no kid is turned away from our club due to financial reasons. So, but at $75 for that school year, 180 days of school, if, that would break down to essentially a parent could take their kid, or a guardian could take their kid to our club after school, or they'd be at the, from school, go to the club. Parents could pick them up after three and a half, four hours, whatever works out for their family schedule and so forth. And it breaks out to basically, you can do that, have your kid at our club for 180 school days throughout the year, and it amounts to or equates to 42 cents per day for the families. So that's the revenue, that's the revenue that we generate, 42 cents per day. That's what we charge families, which is a very minimal amount and very intentionally designed that way so that we can serve as many kids as possible and have the impact that hopefully many of you can appreciate the impact that the Boys and Girls Club has on kids and ultimately has on communities in terms of quality of life. So I would just leave you with a quote from Marion Wright Edelman, which says, "The question is not whether we can afford to invest in every child, it is whether we can afford not to." And so I appreciate all your considerations and all the time and commitment that all of you have put toward this project, and I would certainly hope that we walk away with a positive outcome. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you.
Counselor she.
If I may. So in our last conversation that you and I had with the rest of the council, I asked you, did you ever get in contact with our new school superintendent, Dr. Suggs, to see about housing those students, the Boys and Girls Club, so that you would have more space?
Yeah, and I appreciate the question. I did follow up with Dr. Suggs. And unfortunately, at that particular time, there wasn't interest from the Maryville Community School District to allow the Boys and Girls Club in the school buildings. But I appreciate the question.
All right. And then you spoke on South Haven and how effective the Boys and Girls Club is out there. Does South Haven have a community center?
South Haven does not. I can, I can tell you just for perspective, with the kids that are served at the Maryville Club, which are 40 to 50 at the most, in the other clubs where we have a purpose, what I would call a purpose-built building, and that's Chesterton, Portage, Valpo, Hammond, East Chicago, now South Haven, we would anticipate, and what the range is in terms of attendance for the day, is anywhere from 200 to 300-plus kids on a daily basis at our clubs.
That's what you would anticipate, Mike, at this club?
I would say, I would say, based on the interest that we have with just 7th and 8th graders from one school in the town of Maryville, having 40 to 50 kids interested there, my sense would be that the Maryville Club would be our largest club in the Lake and Porter County. It would be in excess of 300.
I'm sorry. And the communities that you just named, do they have parks and recreation departments or community centers?
I'm not familiar with all of them. I mean, I can speak to South Haven, which has a Porter Township Parks Department, certainly. That's very, very effective, very successful.
City of Hammond has both.
Hammond has.
As well as a brand-new facility, modeled a little after the Dean and Barbara White Center, and a civic center, just saying.
So having both has not been, has been beneficial to the youth?
He can tell you about the effectiveness of the club, but I can tell you that they have coexisted for a long time.
And it's, and our goal, and what we've had in other projects too, is developing partnerships and collaborations with other entities. That's why if the opportunity with the town of Maryville and the community center should happen, we're excited about that, frankly. We don't, we don't view it as a competitive situation. We are in a project right now in the city of Gary with a Tolleson Opportunity Hub, where it's going to be a partnership of three nonprofits. It's going to be the Boys and Girls Club, where we currently have a site today, and a newly-built YMCA attached to it, which will have Methodist Hospital as part of that particular facility. So it's three nonprofits working together, agreeing on services, sharing facilities, and working together to do what they can do best to serve the entire community. And we think that sort of partnership or collaboration would be very similar in Maryville, where we would work with the town of Maryville and the community center and utilize their building as needed. They would have the opportunity to utilize and share services with the Boys and Girls Club so that we bring, ultimately, our goal would bring, our goal would be to bring more kids to that area. And I think the town's goal would bring, to bring more residents, kids and adults alike to that area, and I think that project would do just that.
One last question for me. Bus transportation from the schools, would you all have a bus, like you all do with the Gary, Gary sites and Hammond site? Was it, is it Hammond or East Chicago?
Hammond and East Chicago.
Yes.
So we have buses at most of our facilities, and it's oftentimes a shared, where the schools will do some of the busing, and where the schools don't do the busing, then we will take buses out to get the kids to bring them to the club. And so as it stands now, what Pierce does is there is a bus that brings the kids from Pierce to the community center, and that we would have to work out arrangements on getting the kids from the other schools to that particular location.
And I am not against the Boys and Girls Club by any means. I taught, I worked for the Boys and Girls Club. You know my stance, as I feel like our community center was supposed to be for our children and have programs for our students, and then for the Boys and Girls Club to come and connect next door or behind or be in the same spot, I think that lessens the chance for the community center to do what it was supposed to be put in place to do. I love after-school programs for our youth, ages 13 through 18 specifically, because those are our at-risk youth. I've taught with, I've taught at-risk youth for over 15 years, so I know the need of them having something positive to do. However, again, I feel like you guys have so much money, so many sponsors, so many grants, that I did not feel like the town of Maryville should have given that money to you all to produce what you need to have done, which I feel like we could have gotten another building, another school to let you utilize it as you did MIS back in the day. It was Harrison, was it Harrison in? Now MIS, but to say the least, you all know my stance, but I love the Boys and Girls Club as a whole.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I was curious, of all of the, and he's walking around, just curious, of all of the places that he's in, have any of those communities donated money to the Boys and Girls Club and at the same time asked their community for a significant tax increase?
I can't, I can't speak to the tax increase issue specifically because I'm not familiar with that, but I can tell you that in terms of communities donating or contributing money to the projects, I can tell you specifically that the city of Valparaiso donated part of their ARPA funds to the project, the new building that was built in Valparaiso. In South Haven, South Haven is a unique community in the sense that it has a Valparaiso address. The kids go to Portage Schools, and so they're not, they're, I think, the largest unincorporated The kids go to Portage Schools, and so they're not, they're, I think, the largest incorporated area in the state of Indiana. Michael might be able to correct me on that. But it's, so it's not, it's taken care of or cared for by the county, which provides for a whole different set of challenges and struggles because there's not, oftentimes not enough attention to that particular community. But what the county, what the county did do with their ARPA funds is they were effectively part of the seed money to get that project off the ground, where Porter County contributed eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-five-hundred to that particular, that particular project. And then I can speak to also the most current, and I referenced the Tolleson Opportunity Hub. And as it stands there, and, you know, we can talk about a thirty-million-dollar investment, which is significant, but understanding the magnitude of the project, that thirty million dollars won't go too far. But that thirty million dollars essentially came ten million dollars from the state and economic development money. And it came ten million dollars from the Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation. And, and ten million dollars was given by the city of Gary to plan or offer up the seed money for the Tolleson Opportunity Hub. And those I can say specifically.
Thank you. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the council?
Hello, my name is Mashawn. I am the Director at the Maryville Boys and Girls Club. I just want to talk about a couple of the programs that we run. I don't know if everybody can hear me.
We can hear you. Sure.
So, we run a program called Indiana Kids. So, it focuses on three components. Our first component is homework help. So, we check in with a kid daily, ask them how is school going, if they need help with their homework. There's a designated staff in that area who helps them with their homework. We have another program, it's called Career. So, it teaches the kids if they're interested in becoming a firefighter, a police officer, or a doctor, whatever the case may be. We reach out to different organizations, which we can bring them in to kind of talk to them. And what, a lot of our kids may want to be a firefighter, a police officer, whatever the case, but they don't know how to start that process. So, even if we talk about college or things like that, we help our kids do resumes, career building, things like that. So, that's kind of the programs that we run at the club. We run a STEM program. We have teacher-kid 3D printers, we have crickin' machines, we focus on entrepreneur, entrepreneurship goals. So, there's a bunch of different things at the Boys and Girls Club that we do do. Obviously, with the, you know, more space, we can do more things. Like in our Gary Club, we have a teen tech center where they learn how to make podcasts. They learn how to do sewing, so things like that. At our Hammond Club, we have, they have a recording studio. So, they learn how to make music that's sponsored through Taco Bell. So, obviously, there's a bunch of different programs that we have, and we focus on our kids. But we just need a little bit more help with the space. Obviously, we are very grateful that the Dean and Barbara White Center helps us out. But we just want to work together and help the town of Maryville succeed. I think the worst part of my day is a parent coming to set the kid up, and I have to say, well, what school do you go to? And they don't say Pierce. And I have to tell them, well, I can't accept you. So, that's kind of like, say, that's the worst part of my day. So, I just want to tell you a couple of programs that we do. I love my job. Like I said, that's the only bad part is unfortunately, if they don't go to Pierce, so they're not accepting their grade, then I have to unfortunately tell them that, at the moment, I can't serve you. And then they kind of say, well, what else can I do? And I don't really have an answer for them. So, that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other comment from the council? Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
No.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Nay.
Councilwoman Yuzak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor, two against.
Five to, motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolutions. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two is a resolution of the town of Maryville transferring monies of the twenty-twenty-four budget within the general fund. The decrease is fourteen thousand three thirty-one. The increase is fourteen thousand three thirty-one. The net effect is zero.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzak, for approval of Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two, transfer of funds. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Mr. January. Moving on tonight to Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three. It is a resolution, a transfer of funds in the General Fund Department Seven. We're having a decrease in the general health and life of one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars being moved to the general fund in the insurance package. I believe this is to pay our health insurance, right, Mr. Griffin?
Actually, I believe that this was done to cover the general health, the general insurance package. So, it's being moved from the health insurance line, where we've got an economy right now in order to support a payment for one of our multi-peril premiums.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Chair Lunt, take your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit. Couple seconds by Counselor Neal and Counselor She. Chair, recognize Counselor Neal. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Moving on to Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-four, which actually should have been at your tables when you came in. Here it is. This is a resolution in support of financing of the fire protection territory. It's a joint enactment of the provider agency and the participating agency to authorize and approve the proposal from Standard and Poor's Global to support a credit rating associated with the imminent sale of Maryville Fire Protection Territory Bonds Series Twenty Twenty-four. Anything to add, Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, no. This will be paid for by the bond proceeds. But because it exceeds under our purchasing policy fifteen thousand dollars, we need the purchasing authority, which in this case is the Town Council jointly with the Township Trustee, to allow for this contract to be approved so we can pay. We actually have already undergone the interview with Standard and Poor's for the rating. And our hope is, is that you'll allow this. This is essentially built into the cost of issuance.
Just the nineteen thousand five hundred?
That is correct.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. President.
Chair, recognize Mrs. Yuzak for the motion. Mr. Pettit, second. Questions or comments on the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Ms. Shine, any BZA or large gathering?
No, Mr. President.
We have no old business and no new business before us. We're open for public comment. Any public comment this evening?
Good evening. My name is Luth Beer, seven-seven-nine-four Wright Street. And one of our concerns are the traffic on Morton and Wright Street with a four-wheeler or eight TVs, whatever you want to call it. Kids riding there, especially late afternoon towards the evening when it's twilight. You hardly can see them, they have no lights, no license plates. They go fly over these speed humps. They enjoy it, you know? Sometimes there's a kid sitting in the back, like three, four years old, and lets out a scream, you know? And it's just a concern that something's going to happen eventually.
Sure.
So, I know you guys put up the speed humps. It's the second year we have it. I don't know when you're going to dig them up again for the winter time.
Soon.
Yeah, I know. It's a shame.
We really can't plow over them, so.
Well, but the thing is, is I don't know how much it costs to put them up and down compared to stationary ones made out of cement or concrete or something like that. I've seen other neighborhoods that have it, and I'm pretty sure that there's no plows. They know how to operate a plow to go up a little bit when they go over these speed humps. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief, you wrote down that address, right?
I did.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Massarch, two oh one, East Sixty-Eighth Place. I'd like to start off by thanking Matt Lake. Last week, I had a number of my fellow neighbors complain about the stormwater drainage system. Thursday night, I sent Matt an email late in the afternoon. He responded well after four o'clock. And by Monday morning, every point that I had asked for on behalf of my neighbors, he had addressed. And the construction people were out. They've addressed the issue, so thanks for being on top of it. That's what people like to see, and they love it. As far as chief news is goes in the Police Department, make sure that all of your people know that the residents love you. For the first time in twenty-five years, a Maryville officer had somebody stopped at Sixty-Eighth in Connecticut, and I literally took pictures and was sending it to my neighbors, like, look, this is real. It's, it's not something that we talk about anymore. So, thank you so much. Appreciate those efforts. And finally, Mr. Bella, the thing of it is about the disdain and disrespect that you show is, we all see it. And that's the problem. When you exclude the residents from your decision-making process, that's the thing that insults and infuriates people the most. And I always give credit where credit is due regardless of my own personal feelings. The, the committee that you set up on the data centers, I was one-hundred percent behind. I will praise that all day long. And you and council-involved residents was a beautiful, beautiful example. But we need to do that for other things so that we can solve other problems. Because it's not a us versus them, it's a, we're all in the same boat. We just need to come to better decision-making decisions. And when you exclude certain people, it kind of tends to get them fired up. And I will continue to get residents fired up and in this seats over here so that they understand what's going on.
Good. Thank you for doing that.
We appreciate you, Brian.
Yes.
Renouncements tonight, our next Town Council meeting is Tuesday, October eighth, at six-thirty. A reminder about trunk retreat on October twenty-fourth at five-thirty at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Chair Lunt, take your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, 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 right?